Welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have a moment of silence for our invocation. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will ask our Veteran of the Month, Master Sergeant Retired Wayne Collins, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe he's here. Yes, he is. Please stand with me. Thank you. Uh, sorry.
Uh, excuse me. We have someone to do the prayer.
Who was it? Who was it?
Pastor.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I don't have any. Uh, it's always good to have prayer. So we just had a silent prayer and now we will have the word. Please pastor.
Hi, I'm Pastor Rodney McDowell and I'm the new pastor at Riverdale First Baptist. And I'm honored to be here and to lead this invocation. So let's, uh, let's, let's pray. Almighty God, I come to you in the name of your only begotten son, Jesus, and by the power of the Holy Spirit. Scripture urges us that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high position, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. In obedience to this divine command, I pray for all these officials here today, I pray that you would grant them a spirit of wisdom to make godly choices. I pray that you would strengthen them as they seek to govern and lead. I pray for our mayor, city council, commissioner, police chief, judges, and all who serve our community. Strengthen them with wisdom and grace for their various responsibilities that they have. May they manage their teams and their projects well, keep their hearts pure and their eyes fixed on you as they work in the best interest of our community. May all their decisions bring glory to you, triune God. You would have us live peaceful and quiet lives, godly and dignified in every way. And for this, we pray, Christ permeate this administration, permeate this local government, turn our hearts to you, fix our hearts on you, protect our ears from lies and deception. May we keep your word as our compass. And most of all, I pray that you would draw us closer to you. If we know you, Lord, as our Savior, continue to shepherd us. And if we do not, call us to trust in you by your spirit. May we all experience the love of God through the gospel of Jesus Christ. And Father, I thank you for Christ. Christ, I thank you for your death, burial, resurrection, ascension, and intercession on my behalf. Holy Spirit, thank you for regenerating me, sealing me, and sanctifying me. All glory, honor, and power be to the triune God in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Sorry.
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Are there any additions, additions, any commissioners would like to make? I will add or like to request as emergency item at the request of finance as well as the sheriff to add a emergency budget amendment. And the amount of fourteen million eight hundred sixty-four thousand and nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. Is there a second? Oh, it's for, uh, his budget shortfall. Salaries. Say what? Oh, there's two of them. Okay. We'll take, take separately. Uh, Ms. Merritt, come up and tell them exactly what the, what the first budget request is for.
Good evening Chairman and Board of Commissioners and Vice Chair from afar. I've got two budget amendments, um, tonight for you on an emergency basis for the Sheriff's Department. I'll take the first, the easiest one first. Budget Amendment two dash twenty-six. This is to appropriate funds to reflect that civil, the Civil Service Board's reinstatement of a former captain in the sheriff's office. He is due to be back at work, so we are trying to fund him a position to come back into.
Okay, that's for the second one.
That's for the second one.
So there's, I made a motion for the first one for the budget amendment for fourteen million.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted you to explain what that fourteen million was for.
Okay, so the fourteen million is Budget Amendment two dash twenty-five. It is to appropriate funds to cover salaries, overtime, benefits, and other contract service fees, supplies and medical service fees for the remaining fiscal year twenty-four. Several weeks ago, finance came to you with, to notify you that he was running out of, that the sheriff's office was running out of budget for the fiscal year twenty-four. So, um, last week, I actually spoke to Sheriff Allen and let him know that with this coming payroll, it will bring his budget down to just over three hundred thousand remaining. So we are at a point in time that we do need to fund it.
Okay, so my motion is to place on the regular agenda. And is there a second on this one?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I. Opposed, that's unanimous. The other emergency item is, as Ms. Merritt just spoke on, to add a captain's position? Is that correct?
To add a captain's position on behalf of the Civil Services, Civil Service Board's reinstatement of a former captain that's coming back.
Do we have any additional information, Mr. Chairman? Reports from the Civil Service Board regarding this matter?
Um, I can ask the HR Director to come up here and talk about that. I don't know if we can give the name out or not.
Can we not discuss this in executive session?
We can do that.
Yes, sir. I was gonna make that suggestion to take it out.
No, no. What I'm saying is we already discussed it in the executive session.
Oh, you have? Okay. That's no problem. But can you give me a copy as well then?
Uh, you should have, do you not have one?
Which one is it?
It's, um, the two dash twenty-six. It's the thirty thousand oh fifty-two.
So with that being said, I will ask that to be placed separately on the general, uh, agenda. Is there a second? Any other questions? Those in favor, I. Opposed? Is unanimous. And also, I'd like to make, uh, mention that Commissioner Davis is not present, but he is attending via Zoom and it's allowable per law that he attend, he's able to attend per Zoom at least, any commissioner for at least twice during the calendar year. So glad to have you with us, Commissioner Davis. Any others to the agenda?
Yes, Chairman. We are removing item number twenty from the agenda. Twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one.
That was gonna be my suggestion.
Let's see. All right, is there a motion to remove Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one? I'll put that in the form of a motion. Okay, Commissioner Franklin, I'll second the motion. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, can we bring it to the work session for discussion next week?
Next week?
Yes.
Yes.
The work session.
Yes. Any others? Those in favor, I. Opposed? Is unanimous. Are there any others to the agenda?
Uh, yes. Number eleven.
You'd like to do a, what was it?
Uh, just pull it for, uh, regular, regular agenda.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-two. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, Clayton County, Georgia, approving a private activity bond transaction to assist in financing Wingate Apartments for approximately, well, at three hundred, thirty million dollars for, uh, two hundred and eleven multifamily housing rental units. Uh, you clear on that, Madam Clerk? Any others? All right, here and on the, yes, Commissioner Davis.
Could you, could you repeat that one, please?
Item twenty, and that was the Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one. Uh, no, I'm sorry. That's not twenty-one. You said it was ten, eleven.
No, for me was eleven.
Eleven. Uh, my, pardon me, it's, uh, twenty twenty-four dash seventy-two. And it's approving a private activity bond transaction to assist in financing the Wingate Apartments, uh, which, at thirty million dollars. Clear now? All right. Any others?
Understood, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
To adopt it, rather. I'll second the motion. Any questions on any of the items? Those in favor, I. Opposed? Is unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Governor Anna Maya Canoe.
Is she here? Please come forth. All right, that's our little governor.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors Anna Maya Canoe. Whereas Lovejoy High School Key Club made history, and so did one of their students, Anna Maya, when she became the first African-American Key Club Governor of Georgia. And whereas, in addition, Anna Maya received the Outstanding Lieutenant Governor Award and Board Member of the Year in twenty twenty-three. And whereas Anna Maya is a marketing and entrepreneurship student at Lovejoy High School, she is known for her active presence in many extracurricular activities at school. And whereas after graduation, Anna Maya wants to further her collegiate career, majoring in strategic communication with an emphasis in business management. Her dream is to work in public relations and continue to serve her community. Now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize Anna Maya Canoe for her outstanding accomplishments. We continue to encourage her to continue striving for success and commend her for her hard work, dedication, perseverance, and passion for helping her community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the second day of April in the year two thousand twenty-four.
We are very proud of her. Who says that our young people aren't making a difference, not only at Clayton County, but around the state? Please give our thanks.
The next item on the agenda is Employee Gratitude Day.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners celebrates Employee Gratitude Day, April fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas Clayton County Board of Commissioners take great pride in acknowledging and appreciating the contribution of its employees, who are the integral part of the Clayton County family. And whereas Clayton County remains committed to providing its employees with a safe, supportive, and inclusive work environment where they can thrive professionally. The work environment plays a pivotal role in determining employee satisfaction, recruitment, retention, and productivity. And whereas Clayton County Board of Commissioners is committed to fostering a dynamic and thriving work environment where an employee's unique skills and contributions are valued and recognized. The goal is to create a workplace where there are opportunities for professional growth and development while empowering individuals to reach their full potential. And whereas this dedicated day is to publicly express gratitude for the invaluable contributions of our employees, our hope is this formal act of recognition will serve as a strong morale booster and demonstrate a culture of unwavering appreciation for our employees' hard work. Now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, April fifth, two thousand twenty-four, to be Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Employee Gratitude Day, and urge internal and external partners and communities to be aware of the valuable services our employees continuously provide to enhance our quality of life, making Clayton County a better place to live, work, and play. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the second day of April in the year two thousand twenty-four.
The next item on the agenda is Two Thousand Twenty Four National Library Week.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize National Library Week. Whereas libraries have served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. And whereas every library, whether public, school, academic, or special, has something unique to offer its community. And whereas libraries are treasure institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. And whereas in times of economic instability, communities turn to and depend on their libraries and librarians. And whereas librarians and the guardians of free access to information and resources, libraries are for everyone, everywhere. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore I, be it resolved that I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, proclaim National Library Week, April seventh through thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities they unlock for us every day. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this second day of April in the year two thousand twenty-four.
All right, the next item that we have on the agenda is Veteran of the Month, presented by Senior Services and the Veterans Advisory Board.
Our Veteran of the Month, Master Sergeant Retired Wayne Collins. Wayne Collins enlisted in the United States Army in Atlanta, Georgia in October of nineteen seventy-six and was assigned to the United States Army Signal School at Fort Gordon, Georgia. There he completed basic combat training and advanced individual training as a wire systems installer, switchboard operator, maintainer. During his military service, Wayne served with the Twenty-Fourth Signal Battalion, Twenty-Fourth Infantry in Fort Stewart, Georgia, Two Hundred and Sixty-First Signal Battalion, Third Infantry Division, Warsburg, Germany, Second Combat Battalion, Basic Training, Fort McAllen, Alabama, as a drill sergeant, and the Two Hundred and Twenty-Eighth Signal Battalion, Fifth Signal Com, uh, Command in Frankfurt, Germany. And that's the short list of places he, he has served. Wayne Collins received awards and decorations that include the Meritorious Service Medal, Army Accommodation Medal, Desert Storm Desert Shield Campaign Ribbon, Airborne Air Assault Badge, and again, that's just to name a few. After twenty-two years of service, Master Sergeant Collins retired while stationed at Fort McPherson, Georgia. Mr. Collins has lived in the city of Marlboro for thirteen years. He serves as the Chairman of Marlboro's Planning and Zoning Board and is the current Commander of Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Fifty Eighty in Marlboro, Georgia. He is active with Neighborhood Watch, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and the Geezer Squad. I'm not gonna comment on that, but that's what it says right here, Geezer Squad. Wayne is married to Kath, Catherine, his loving wife of forty-five years, and from this union are two children, Marcus and Tanisha, and two grandchildren, Wayne Carter and Riley. Please help me to recognize and honor Master Sergeant Retired Wayne Collins.
All right, everybody, dress in color now. Dress in color. You're all right. Okay, listen one more time.
All right. Next item up is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Uh, second the motion, are there any questions on any of the items? Here and none of those in favor, I. Opposed? Is unanimous.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, item number five, what I would like for us to do is, um, it's approved, but we really need to give some type of a paving schedule. We, um, vote on these items, but then the citizens are always asking, when are their roads going to be paved? Now, we understand that with weather, sometimes it's setback, but at least if they, we're just not approving it and then, um, not giving additional information, um, it would really, really help us to be able to make sure the citizens are informed and help our aides as well.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, the nice, the next item on the agenda will be the emergency item budget amendment two dash twenty-five presented.
You have one for that, Mr. Reed?
Uh, yes, that's item eleven.
Yeah, well, let's take item eleven first. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Reed.
Uh, res, item eleven, oh, first of all, good evening, um, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Board. Resolution twenty twenty-four seventy-two is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, approving a private activity bond transaction to assist in financing Wingate Apartments, a thirty million dollar, approximately two hundred and eleven multifamily housing rental development located in Clayton County. It authorizes the Chairman to perform, perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And this is a request from the Clayton County Housing Authority.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there's a second.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Can anybody, is anybody here or?
Uh, yeah, I reached out to the Housing Authority to see if they would be able to come today. They did not have someone, uh, who was able, but they did send me some details on the request, which I can kind of outline what the summary of, their executive summary is, if you like. Okay, so, uh, this is a request, um, it's a two hundred and eleven unit project that was, uh, needed for a thorough makeover. What they planned on doing is providing immediate maintenance and renovations to approve the living conditions and compliance. That, that, uh, project cost, stands at approximately twenty-three point nine million. The project is located at forty-seven thirty-five Courtney Drive in Forest Park, um, and the project is planned to be financed through a housing authority issuing a thirty million dollar tax-exempt bond covering the acquisition, construction, long-term financing. Uh, right now, the project, or the current facility there has a twelve percent vacancy rate. Their plan is to reduce that vacancy rate to approximately five percent. Uh, there are fourteen, um, units that they plan to lease immediately, uh, targeting a reduction in vacancies from twenty-five to eleven units, and they will adjust, uh, the below fair market rents to fair market rates as leases renew. Uh, they plan to invest in additional two point seven million dollars in capital expenditures, including addressing deferred maintenance needs. They have a project team that's made up of Push Ministry, which is, uh, championing, they, they claim this, uh, they're championing housing, uh, solutions and community development, GSC Capital LLC, uh, that is, uh, known in their, uh, literature for community-centric investments, and then Scott Property Management, which will be the property manager. So that is, again, this is not a bond that is being issued by the, uh, board, so there's no, um, bond issues for the, for the board. It's just that you all are the issue, the authorizing agent for the Housing Authority.
Okay, um, you answered at least two of the questions I had. Um, how many bedrooms?
Two hundred and eleven.
How many bedrooms?
Oh, I, uh, let me see.
And is, is it occupied now? Do you know?
Yes, it is occupied, but the, the.
The vacancy rate is twelve percent, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that means it's eighty-eight percent occupied?
Right, so they have a number of units. Um, they have one bedroom, six one-bed, one-bath units, two, uh, fifty-one two-bed, one-bath units, fifty-nine two-bed, one-and-a-half bath units, three, I'm sorry, six three-bed, one-bath, seven three-bed, one-and-a-half bath. So it, it's structured, it ranges from one-bed, one-bath to three-bed, one-and-a-half bath, and it range from as little as three units to up to fifty-nine units. The square footage ranges from about six hundred and seventy-five at the smallest to a thousand seventy-seven, that's, that is, uh, currently. And then the rents, uh, range from between one thousand to one thousand two hundred and seventy-one, uh, dollars per month.
Okay, I, I was wondering if, are they gonna leave the occupants there while they renovate and all, or, because the, um, the apartment complex they have on, uh, Garden Wall really turned out really nice, and I just wondered if this one's gonna be the same way?
Uh, that, from what the material is, what the material that was provided, they plan on not canceling any current leases that are there. So, um, they wanna bring up the deferred maintenance that needs to be done. And then as the apartment. And then as the apartment is improved, that they will adjust rates accordingly to match what things have been done to the property to bring it up to scale.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I just need one point of clarity. Did I hear you say twenty-one thousand a month? Or was it two-thousand-one-hundred?
I believe it was one-thousand-two-hundred. I may have misspoke. It was one-thousand to one-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-one dollars a month.
Just wanted to get that corrected on record.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Push Ministries, what is their role? As an investor, as it, or is it in its management? What is their role?
It looks, from what they have here, they are kind, it looks to be the project manager that they look at housing solutions, community development. The people who are the financiers appear to be GSC Capital LLC. And then the property manager. It's GSC Capital LLC. And then the property management is Scott Property Management.
Do you know if that's the same company that manages, what is it called? Is it Premier Gardens?
No.
All right, any other questions?
Yes. Thank you, very important. Was this vetted through our individuals who we contract with in regards to making sure that all the information that's provided today has been vetted properly?
The information that was provided to me was provided by the Housing Authority, which is the issuing agent. They have done all the vetting as far as doing the bond deal and making sure that they are satisfied from the Authority's perspective that they want to move forward with this. Unfortunately, it would have, they would have been the better people to ask, but because they had scheduling conflicts, they sent this to me. And so I'm going kind of by what they've provided.
Got it. One more quick question regarding that. Not only has it, we don't have anybody to answer those questions right now on the vetting process, but also even though we are confirming the bonds, what is the possible liability for this board for confirming them? Is, are there any liabilities at all? Are all liabilities assumed by the Authority?
By the Authority, because the Authority is going to be the issue, is going to be the bond issuing agent. It's just that because the way the state law says that you have to be the one that gives them the authority to be able to issue the bonds. But it will not have Clayton County, Georgia on there. It will be from the Housing Authority.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Good job, sir.
Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next item will now be the Budget Amendment Two-Dash-Twenty-Five presented by Stacy Merritt in Finance.
Good evening again, Commissioners. I have Budget Amendment Two-Dash-Twenty-Five. This is for the Sheriff's Office to appropriate funds to cover the salaries, overtime benefits, other contract service fees, supplies and medical service fees for the remaining fiscal year 2024. And the Sheriff is here to answer some questions, if you have any.
I have a question, probably of Finance.
Okay.
Okay, this is through what date?
This will be through June thirtieth.
Okay, so.
It's projected to take the office through the end of June.
So the new budget starts July?
July first, yes ma'am.
All right, so is there a motion to approve? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Yeah, I have one, Sheriff rather, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman and Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, and your, I think it was the Captain or Major that you sent last time?
Yes, Major Martin.
Major, okay. And he tried to explain it, but basically, this board was curious as to how we got to this stage here where we're so far over budget.
Yes, Chairman. Reference to the full-time salaries and full-time benefits, that's going to be, account for three-point-four million dollars of the overall ask. And so that, I would ask Finance or maybe Human Resources to explain how the full-time and the benefits got into play. Because I'll give you an example. If I'm allotted a hundred people, I only hired a hundred people. I didn't hire over what was allotted. So they would have to explain how the salaries and the benefits fall into that three-point-four million dollars. Now, from my understanding, it's because when the thirty-three deputies were added, they were added either after the budget or in between the budget, which, which did something with that. But they would have to explain to you about the actual full-time salaries and the benefits, the three-point-four million dollars of it.
Well, in that respect, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Merritt, we approve salaries and benefits when we approve the salary, the creation of those positions. Is that not correct?
Right.
Okay.
So.
And the other, you said that accounts for what, three points?
Three-point-four million dollars. So the, next if you go down, you go into part-time salaries. So with part-time salaries, you see that is, that goes over or is going over to one-point-three million dollars. So what we had to, what we had to do was compensate what we didn't have for full-time and hire part-time. So for example, if I was short one full-time person, I would have to hire two part-time people to do the job of that one person. So let me give you an example of where, I mean about the shortfall and where I'm saying I'm fully staffed but not properly staffed. Now, before I go into these numbers, I want to be very clear that this has nothing to do with the current Board, the current Finance or Human Resources and the current Sheriff. This is all what has happened previously and out of our control that are here. But in the year 2003, there were one-hundred-and-twelve correction officers allotted for the jail. In 2014, that number rose to a hundred-and-sixty-five correction officers in 2014. Today, I have a hundred-and-twenty-three. So right there, you see that there's a difference where I'm short correction officers for the jail. When you go into clerical staff, in twenty, in 2003, I was allotted fifty Sheriff's Office service clerks, fifty. Almost twenty years later, I'm allotted fifty-three. I only have three more clerks than I had twenty years ago, when over the time, we've had the pandemic, we've had all these different things that have occurred, and I only have three more clerical staff doing the jobs. So I had to compensate by hiring part-time people to fill the shortfall where we were employees. Just another stat, you know, last year we had over six-hundred-thousand people visit our courthouses. Six-hundred-thousand. This year, we're at one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and we're not even close to the end of the year. We're not even at the halfway mark yet. Far as the inmate population, when we get into the medical and we get into the food service, when we sign a medical contract, the medical company says, hey, we will provide medical care for a certain amount of inmates. And let's hypothetically say they, we'll provide medical care for fifteen-hundred inmates at X amount of dollars. What's not accounted for in that bill is medical bills from people that come from the outside agencies or that come into the Sheriff's Office. So I'll give you an example. Last, two nights ago, there was an arrest that was going to be made by the Clayton County Police Department. The guy that committed the crime, which was going to be attempted murder, aggravated assault, had a trach in his throat where he had to be placed on a ventilator, and he needed a ventilator. The jail refused him because we could not accommodate him and take care of him. We would have had to place him inside of a hospital and for the duration of his stay in the jail, we would have to, we would have had to pay his medical bills. After conversations, we went a different route to where warrants are going to be taken on him later and we'll go get him after he comes from the hospital. But that is a bill that's not accounted for in the actual fourteen-million-dollar contract. So had we, had we accepted him in, and if his bill was a thousand dollars a day, ten thousand dollars a day, we would have paid it. Give another example, Georgia State Patrol is riding through Clayton County. They chase a car in Clayton County, it hits a wall. That inmate, once he's arrested, if he goes to the hospital that he was brought by Georgia State Patrol, we have to pay the bills. And no one is sending us checks to pay medical bills for people that are coming outside of the medical contract. The medical contract is only for inmates that are in the jail, to get them seen, to get the medications, to service and patch them up off inmates that are in the jail. It does not account for people that are brought to the facility. And that's where you have the influx of where we're almost six million over the actual medical bill. That's for medical.
So let me ask, so you're saying the increase was due to patient care as opposed to an increase in medical supplies?
All of it, all of it is in together, but the majority of it, the biggest bill, came from, came from patient care. When you go into food service, because food service is another ticket item there, food service accounts for an overage of about five-hundred-thousand dollars. The current contract for food service covers about sixteen-hundred inmates, and we're at nineteen-hundred. So we're outside of the contract that's allotted for it, right? So when you do that, it's a different charge or a different amount once you go outside of what's budgeted. Then also something that's not in here that you have to look at is when the washing machine or the dishwasher goes down, we have to provide styrofoam trays to the inmates. The styrofoam trays are at a different rate than what a hard tray or plastic tray is. When you start entering styrofoam trays, that goes to twenty-thousand dollars per month. So we're charged about five-thousand dollars per week when a part is missing or, or the washer goes down. So that happened over the year, which is where we're at about five-hundred-thousand over. But everything you see here is medical, food service, and you're dealing with, dealing with employees and employee salaries.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question of Finance. If, well, we've already had the motion and all that, but if these funds were not issued, and I want this for the public to know, what happens? Say if the fourteen million was not approved or will not be approved or whatever, what happens to the employees, the jail itself?
By law, we can't appropriate funds without the Board's approval. We would need that approval in order to continue once he's completed all of his funding. So the Board would have to take action in order for the services to continue.
Right, that's what I'm saying. In order for people to continue to be paid and the jail to continue to operate.
Yes.
But the, the short answer is if we did not pay it, which by law we really have to, then employees would not be working. Nobody'd take care of the detainees, and we have a bigger issue on our hands, so, yeah.
Correct, and discretionary funds would have to stop. So like travel, training and travel for regular employees, all of that would definitely come to a halt because the funds are not available for that.
I just wanted.
Pardon me. Any other questions?
I have one question.
Commissioner.
Back to Finance. When is our fund balance at?
The projected fund balance as of the end of the year would be about approximately seventy-five million, and that's barring any unforeseen things happening between now and then.
Does that include the fourteen?
No, it does not.
And how many months of operations for the entire county is that seventy-five million allowed us to have?
Yes, about, approximately fifteen million a month.
Four or five.
And what is the recommended amount that we should have? What we would like to recommend is four months, okay?
And when you say end of the year, you're speaking end of the fiscal year?
Correct, correct.
Any other questions?
Yes, Chairman.
Commissioner Davis.
I have a couple. He spoke about the benefits and the part-time employees. I'd like to know a little bit more about why the part-time pot is so great in the, in a projected deficit here.
Sheriff, that's for you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, the overtime, I'm sorry.
Okay, Vice Chairman, could you clarify which one you just, you just asked me about?
Restate your question.
Go ahead, I'm concerned about the overtime. The overtime projected shortage is vast. And I'd like to, for you to explain, why is that number so high considering you have so many part-time employees, as you just stated?
Yes, so I don't have part-time, I don't have part-time correction officers or, so to answer your question, part-time versus overtime. Overtime is there, or there's a, there's a shortfall in the overtime because we have to compensate for the sixty lost positions that we do not have full-time. So I have to hire part, I have to hire two part-time people to do the job of one full-time person. So that is what's incurring the overtime. Everything on here, the overtime, the overtime and the part-time could be fixed with proper staffing, correct? That I have addressed in the upcoming budget. But the medical and the food service, it's unforeseen. You cannot project what may happen with the medical and the food service. Even if today you all properly staffed me, I still could not tell you who would come into the jail doors with a high medical bill. So that's unforeseen and something that's out of my control and you all's control. But something that we can fix coming for the, the next budget is the actual staffing shortages that we have. And so we can be properly staffed is what's needed.
Okay. I just have another question, because it seems like there's going to be a shortfall over the next three months of roughly about four-point-seven million dollars, since we're asking for about fourteen-point-eight. Is there a way, CFO Merritt, that we were to do this on a monthly basis, to begin to look at what the actual, projected shortcut is for that monthly basis, instead of proving this all at one time?
If that's the will of the Board, I can bring this back on a monthly basis.
Any other questions?
That being said, if that decision is.
That's not the motion. There's a motion on the floor for the fourteen million.
And for me, Chairman, yeah, I would like to see this on a monthly basis rather than just going out for a full-quarter allocation of funds here. Because I'm just not comfortable with the, I just call it the financial mechanisms that are taking place over there right now. And I'd like to see more to find out what's going on. That's just my, my thought.
Well, this is April, and the fiscal year ends in June, really. So what are we doing? I mean, two months?
Yes.
I've, I mean.
Two months or an additional roughly nine million dollars, that's correct.
Well, all the, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but all the invoices and the pay of the employees go through Finance anyway. So.
Correct.
If this Board just could request a status report as to where we are at the end of the month, we all know that the Sheriff is the Sheriff. Given the money, it's his to do with it as he sees fit. But for our benefit, and hearing what Commissioner Davis is saying, I think a monthly report for the next two months, so we can really gauge and maybe even help out in areas when he comes to set his budget, the Sheriff comes to set his budget, that say, hey, have you looked at this? Because this is trending this way. So it might be a benefit that you provide us with an update on those last two months.
We can do that.
And also to, to the point of the respect for our coffers, I believe we need to be respectful of that and to make sure that we're not dipping below what's needed in those funds, in that fund balance.
Absolutely.
And I think this protects it a little, it protects it a little bit more.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
May.
Oh, four-one, not three-one, I'm sorry. Oh, four, one, not three, one, I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis was opposed.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board of Commissioners, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Budget Amendment two dash twenty-six, also presented by Finance.
Good evening again, Budget Item two dash twenty-six, this budget amendment is to request funding to appropriate funds to reflect the Civil Service Board's reinstatement of a former captain in the sheriff's department, sheriff's office, in the amount of thirty thousand oh fifty-three.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
Um, I know that in the past, it was that civil service has the right to uphold any type of disciplinary action, or to say the disciplinary action was not fit, and I'm realizing that, I would like to know, number one, exactly what was the reasoning for why the Civil Service Board made this suggestion, in terms of hiring back the person and who is the person? This needs to be stated on record, because we can't make decisions in executive session without putting it on record.
Can we, can I say that?
Okay, so, HR had communicated with me that the applicant Desmond Coleman had won the civil service case, the county did not appeal that case as of the end of the year, and he, it was his wishes to be reinstated.
What can I request?
It was his wishes to be reinstated. The sheriff does not currently have an open, open captain position, so we're funding one to, for the remainder of the year, and then we'll address it in the budget in the next few weeks.
But, how far back does this case go?
That is going to be an HR question for Director Ambles.
Ms. Ambles.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioner Franklin, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. Commissioner, Vice Chair, can you repeat your question?
No, you can.
Oh, but, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hamburg, could you repeat the question for me?
I was asking, how far back does this case go with civil service?
Uh, the civil service case, Mr. Coleman, he was terminated in twenty eighteen, so it goes back to twenty eighteen.
I, I just wanted to know.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. All right, public comment, Madam Clerk.
We will now hear public comment. Citizens will be given a two-minute maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please note that all public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members shouting and use, using obscene language. Following twenty minutes of hearing from the public, the Board of Commissioners will allow the remainder of citizens who have signed up to be heard at the next Tuesday business meeting.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Chairman, I'd like to have a thirty-second point of privilege, because I want to acknowledge the youth commission and the wonderful job that Nicole Horn is doing, and they did the forums. So, I want to applaud the young people that really have done their due diligence in asking us questions, and they, they sent me a question, eh, thirteen questions, and I've answered them already, because I know, you know, I'm just a Clayton County. But now that my minutes have started, number nine, the question that they had was, what would you do or implement in accountability and transparency to not allow a thief of taxpayers' money by a company like Roman United to steal five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars from taxpayers? And I answered the question, but I'm not going to elaborate on that, but I, I think I've come before this board three times, and I think that I've asked for theft by deception charges to be issued. Now, I have not had a conversation with the Chief of Police, I have not had a conversation with the DA, but I have done an open records request in the wrong way, I've asked for the contract, because none of the benchmarks were met, if they met none of the benchmarks, then we have a theft by deception case. And the citizens everywhere I go want to know, where's our money? So, we don't need to pay attorneys, we need to have this case investigated by the Chief of Police, Chief Roberts, in conference with the DA, Toshem Mosely, we need to secure a warrant for this gentleman's arrest, because it was fraud and it was misrepresentation, and I thank you for your time, and have a blessed evening.
Teresa Tally.
I've been struggling with this all day. Please don't beat me up with what I'm about to say. I didn't write it down, but I want to say this, God has put this on my heart. When I saw the news that our current Sheriff Allen and our former Sheriff Hill are feuding with each other, I didn't like it. I think both of them need to talk without social media, without the news outlet, without cell phones, because at one point, they was friends, and they are family. This is something that I really would like for them to do. I know I can't make them do it, but I do ask both gentlemen to put it on their heart to do it. And I would like to say, it's a lot of candidates are in a race for everything in Clayton County. A lot of their posters are, are missing, or, you know, stopped. Everybody have paid a lot of money for these items, so just please stop stealing them, tearing them up, just please stop. But I really would like for Allen and Hill to talk before this get out of hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy Howard. Marcy Howard. Is that, was it Marcia? This, oh, looks like him to me, yes, ma'am. Looks like him.
All right, greetings, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and everyone in the audience, Nancy Howard from the city of Riverdale, and keep Riverdale beautiful. I'm here to invite you guys to Clayton County Second Annual Seven Cities Cleanup Day, happening on April twentieth, which is our day. Last year, we had over a hundred and twenty volunteers, and we were able to pick up two thousand four hundred pounds of litter from our streets. The cities that were part of it were College Park, Riverdale, Jonesboro, Morrow, and we even had the county government. This year, the same cities have agreed to participate, and we also have Walking Authority, Atlanta Gaslights, the Forest Park Minister's Association, Solicitor General, Solicitor General's Office, and many other entities, including AKAs. The flyer is online, and I can provide it to the Communications Department. We are seeking volunteers, so if anyone wants to participate, we are hoping that this year's per, event is going to be bigger than last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Garber.
Chairman, could you ever give that time again?
Say again.
Did you ever give the time to that cleanup again, once again?
Yes, sir, it's going to be from eight in the morning to eleven, and it varies by location, actually, but most, most of them are from that time, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Mister Chairman, members of the board, and to you, Mister Dave, Commissioner Davis, I'm sorry that Commissioner Davis's recommendation for the sheriff's budget of request of fourteen million dollars, his recommendation wasn't passed of doing it monthly. With a monthly budget going out to support the sheriff's department, you could keep track of the money, short-term money. Now, in the meantime, of money slowly going out to support the sheriff's department, is you could call in an independent auditors, people that are highly recognized in the forensic of jails and, and prisons, and see exactly where the money is going, because I get a little lost in the, in the rhetoric of fully staffed and properly staffed, and you got to trust but verify. Thank you.
David Hamburg.
Good evening, Madam Clerk, Commissioners, Commissioner. David Hamburg, Riverdale, District Three. I want to come back to a statement I made months ago about the quality of life. We hear about moving the county forward, but yet, twenty-six point nine percent, those that are in poverty, were leaving behind. Those numbers come from a Journal Constitution Report of School Age Children from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, report issued January twenty twenty-three. Back in twenty twenty-three also, the Journal Constitution published a multi-part series entitled Dangerous Wellings. Comparatively speaking, twenty twenty-two population of Gwinnett County, nine hundred seventy-five, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, Clayton County, twenty twenty-two also, of two hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred and sixty-four. Today, hopefully, I'll bring you good news. While Gwinnett County Board of Commissioners, on June sixth, twenty twenty-three, approved a new property maintenance code that allows for interior inspections of rental properties and penalties to landlords who fail to make basic repairs. This became law July first, twenty twenty-three. In retrospect, and something we really need to look at, with the size and population difference of us compared to Gwinnett, fourteen complexes in Gwinnett, Clayton County, nineteen, something to really think about, that we need to put forth a quality of issue. This also spells out requirements for landlords, code enforcement, which we have some of the code enforcement people think they don't have to make investigations if the people are behind on the rent. I know Commissioner Hamburg's heard different things, we know what happened to Taylor Woods with the water situation. Please, let's get a quality of life together to help the county. Thank you for your time, your courtesy, and good evening to all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Mister Reed, is there need for executive session?
Yes, on litigation only.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for litigation? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
The second.
Any questions?
No, but Mister Chair, there are elected officials in the audience, not, that we don't recognize, I haven't recognized. I see Councilman from the city of Riverdale, who's always here, if you could just wave. It's good to see you this evening.
Any others you'd like to point out? No?
Do I see any other elected official?
Yeah, you said there are some elected officials, so, so, this was so weird. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Everybody have a good evening.
Final is Matavian Williams and Dexter Ward, releasing the county former Sheriff Hill and current former sheriffs. This is related to civil action style, Matavian Williams versus Dexter Ward, civil action file number one twenty-three, one colon twenty-three, CV zero zero, zero three eight, JPB, in the United States District Court, Northern District of Georgia. This relates to an accident or incident that occurred in the Clayton County Jail in twenty twenty-two, and this is in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, and asking the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue sources and expenses may require under the terms of these agreements.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Is there a second? A second motion. Any questions on either of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed.
Aye.
It's unanimous, motion to adjourn. A second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, good night.